The regular meeting of council, December the 21st. Just a couple of changes, council, looking for your indulgent, please. We've had a request to move bylaw number, I wrote it down here somewhere. Let me get down to it. Bylaw number 7.1 up to the top of our meeting because the folks there have another engagement to get to. And I also need to add to item number six, economic development, 6.4.2. It is the notice that was distributed at the table in regards to the South Vancouver Island Economic Development Association. So with that, I'm looking for approval of the reordered and added agenda.
So moved as amended, your worship?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Public participation, this is the time in the audience, folks, for anyone who's trying to hide behind the podium or anywhere else to step forward and address council. So I will leave it open to you. Jeff?
Hello, mayor and council and staff. Just wanted to have a casual hello tonight. My name is Jeff Hu, and most of you I had the pleasure of getting to know over the last couple of years. I represent British Columbia Investment Management's interest on the land development side at Royal Bay. And just wanted to say hello and have a, take this opportunity to have a real quick recap of the year. It's been a tremendous year out at Royal Bay. We've been very happy about what we've done this year and working with staff in getting Littoria Boulevard built. We think it's very fabulous, a great investment for Colwood and our group, and the opening of Ryder Hegdahl Way as well. And with that, the opening of the Royal Bay Secondary School. And we've also serviced 56 lots out at Royal Bay. And we're poised to move forward with the housing construction with our builder partner, Gablecraft, who's set up a new partnership with BCIMC. And tonight, we also have here tonight is the new representative of British Columbia Investment Corporation and part of the Royal Bay Community Limited Partnership. Tonight, just wanted to say hello and end of the year off in a very positive note. I know we have an application in front of council tonight, and it's really a tweaking of the existing zoning. We look forward to your support. And one, last thing I'd like to do is introduce you to Ben Mycroft. Ben Mycroft will be our new project director at Royal Bay, looking after the land development side, working with Russell. Ben, if you could come up and say hi.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Ben Mycroft. I'm very pleased to join GWL Realty Advisors as Royal Bay project director. So you'll see my face around City Hall, you know, the staff, and I think I had some interupting council meetings. I look forward to working with you all and getting to know you. And I'm based here in Victoria. My office will be onsite at Royal Bay, and I'm very excited for a very busy and productive 2016. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So behalf of the Royal Bay team, I'd just like to wish staff and council a Merry Christmas. Next year will be a very exciting year for our group, and we look forward to continuing to work with staff and council and look forward to your support going forward. It is a tremendous opportunity, and it's right at the top of our list in terms of our priorities. Thank you.
Any other members of the public? Anyone wanting to come before council? Seeing none, we shall move on with our agenda. Next item is mayor's message, and I just wanted to touch on a few things, folks. Just for the record, standing in select committees are to remain status quo for 2016 at this time. But we do, however, have citizen representation, vacancies in finance, protective services, and more recently, cycling advisory. So any interested persons can certainly put their names forward or contact staff for further information. Pleased to announce that council reappointed Arnie Hamilton to West Shore Parks and Rec as the citizen rep for the next two years at that board table. Also wanted to give congratulations to the Royal Bay High School. They have their first production coming out of their theatre, January the 20th. There will be tickets on sale, I'm sure. You'll have to follow up with the school on that one. It's Thornton Wilders Hour Town Performance with the senior acting company of Royal Bay. So looking forward to that one in January. And the other point to note is that the city will be closed inclusively from December the 24th through till reopening January the 4th, Monday. So everybody have a safe and happy holiday with your families and friends, and we'll all see you back in the new year on that regard. From there, is there anything else from council? Just last, or last end of the year, councillor Noll?
Thank you, madam mayor. I want to point out that council on November 9th considered a report on protection of the lagoon pump station for our sewer system, adopted that report. City staff acted proactively and incorporated a small part of that report immediately by building a berm between the lock block wall and the pile of sand that's currently beside the pump station. And then on December 5th and December 12th, we got hit by massive winter storms. If not for that preemptive work, we probably would have suffered at least some flood damage to the pump station. I want to say thank you to staff for acting in a proactive fashion and saving the city from damage.
Thank you, councillor Noll. Anyone else?
I'm in favor of that.
Weren't you down there storm watching? Moving on, folks, to adopt one set of minutes from the regular meeting of council, December the 7th.
So moved.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Receipt on two sets of minutes, one for transportation, public infrastructure, November 2nd, the other for planning and land use, November 17th.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. We have a couple of letters before us in correspondence, the first one being 5.1, letter from Ms. Janice Hoffman. Council?
Move receipt.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Second item is from Ms. Kim Elderkin of the beauty council director of education.
Move receipt.
Any discussion? Called question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to item number 5.3, a memorandum from our councillor Cynthia Day, Chair of Victoria Family Court and Youth Justice Committee. Councillor Day, can I leave this to you for introduction?
Certainly. In November, as Chair of the Victoria Family Court and Youth Justice Committee, I sent a letter which is attached to all capital region municipal councils and the regional district board, and also to the school districts in response to concerns at the family court committee for the best interests of children, especially those who are put in care of the ministry. The children's representative spoke quite passionately to the Vancouver City Council about her report on Paige's story. It's the only story that she has done where she actually used the real name of the child because of the very long string of failures that led to her eventual death at the age of 18. So Vancouver council has made a call on the British Columbia government to extend the option of foster care to the age of 24, and end the practice of automatic aging out to create a secure care system for vulnerable children and youth, to add more rapid response capacity to ensure that action happens quickly when a child or youth is at serious risk, and also to quickly adopt and implement all recommendations from the May 2015 report from the BC Representative for Children and Youth entitled Paige's Story, Abuse, Indifference, and a Young Life Discarded. And they will be having a report back in due time with regard to implementing the recommendations from the BC Rep for Children and Youth. So we are concerned at the Family Court and Youth Justice Committee that there are a number of things that continue to occur in the name of protection of children that do not necessarily follow the UN Convention on the Rights of the Child. And we have been asking that councils pass a unanimous resolution to bring forward through AVICC and UBCM to address the shortfalls in that system. And to that end, the SUC School District did pass a resolution. And I'm bringing forward a worded resolution for Association of Vancouver Island Coastal Communities, which says that whereas the Victoria Family Court and Youth Justice Committee has recommended improvements to the delivery of the BC Child Protection Services and for the province of BC to adhere to the principles enunciated in the UN Convention on the Rights of the Child, and whereas the SUC School District has also called for these improvements and for the province to fully fund the Office of the Representative for Children and Youth, therefore be it resolved that the BC government be asked to take action to improve the delivery of the BC Child Protection Services, to fully fund the Office of the BC Representative for Children and Youth, and to follow the provisions in the United Nations Convention on the Rights of Children. And I would ask that we make that resolution here tonight. So I would so move.
Second, or please? Second. Discussion, council? Councillor Rob?
Thank you. Two questions through the chair to, or through the mayor to councillor Day, if I know, if it's all right. So first, I'm assuming we're not doing anything with the motion that the Vancouver City Council moved, correct?
Correct.
So that was just for information purposes?
It was for information, what other municipalities are doing.
Right.
And what we're asking for is a more general wording specifically centered around the United Nations Rights of the Child.
And my only other question is, what does, what does fully fund mean? Like, you know what I mean? Like, that could be infinity. Like, who knows what fully funded means?
Well...
So did they ever define that for you? Or did the committee ever define what a fully funded means?
The committee did not define that, but the children's representative is, of course, charged with investigating all deaths in care. And it is my understanding that she's had a full docket to deal with and therefore has been short-staffed, and therefore many of her reports have taken a long time to move forward.
Anyone else? Councillor Noll?
Yes, not being fully familiar with the United Nations Convention on the Rights of Children, maybe you could explain where the province is not meeting those, that convention?
Well, specifically when children are in the family court system, so separation, divorce, custody issues, children's rights are not being taken into consideration. In fact, there is a group of lawyers who are collecting other lawyers to provide pro bono assistance, so basically free of charge assistance, because children are going through the court system, and the court system is often looking at the family, the rights of the parents as being equal to and the same as the rights of the children, whereas what's best for them, the parents, is not always what's best for the child. And so at times, children do require their own representation, or at the very least consultation. And you can easily Google UN Rights of Children, and you will see that children have a right to clean water, good food, a place to play, schooling, and a safe home. That's pretty much where it's coming from.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Called question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? And when I asked to reorder the agenda, it doesn't do that automatically on my computer, so my apologies to the folks at the bylaw section. So council, we will be dropping down to item number 7.1 this time, bylaw number 1597, third reading only. Colwood Land Use Bylaw, number 151, 1989, amendment number 148, text amendment, C2 Zone for 1939 and 1945.
Move third reading?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? That's, and now we'll go back on to item number six. 6.1 Finance and Administration, 6.1.1, memo, acting director of finance regarding the MFA Security Issuing Resolution Number 158 in support of a $4.5 million long-term borrowing for Colwood Central. Ms. DeBussy?
Thank you, madam mayor. So this evening you have before you a report that I have authored with considerable input from our director of engineering. This has been a matter that has been outstanding for about 16 years when original loan authorization bylaws were passed. And as part of my report, I put together a bit of a summary for you, which outlines the various bylaws. So I wanted to be clear that this isn't technically new business. In other words, decisions were made by council many years ago in support of establishing the Colwood Central Sewer. This is a local service area, and it is a little bit complicated in terms of there were various bylaws established, and various amounts were authorized for each bylaw, which I've laid out in the schedule. Council subsequently revised some of those bylaws to allow for larger amounts to be borrowed. And so I've also made a note there of those amending bylaw numbers and the amounts that were increased. This is important because copies of all of these bylaws and their amendments and the various certificates that are issued by the province, because when we pass a loan authorization, excuse me, bylaw, they then go to the province of BC, who issues basically a certificate of approval, so that there is another layer, a level of verification on authorization. So as staff, we have put together all of this information, verified that it's there, that it's accurate. We have double-checked with the ministry, with the municipal finance authority as well. This has come before you this evening for a couple of reasons. One, it's time to borrow the money. In fact, we're into overtime according to MFA. So when we put together the budget last year, there was an amount in there that was approved. We were hoping to do part of the main sewer trunk line and the sewer pump station in 2015, and then we were going to hopefully complete it in 2016. Now, our engineering staff advises me that we have now gone to request for proposal to actually build the line and the pump station. This is good, but we also need to borrow the money that is associated with this. The second reason this is coming before council is because I received a phone call from MFA saying, folks, this is supposed to be short-term borrowing. It's been outstanding, some of it, for 16 years. So you're way into overtime here. Short term is normally about five years. They said, so you've got a couple choices. One is you basically repay the $2.1 million that's been sitting there in short term for up to 16 years, and we'll give you up to four years to do that, or you need to borrow, to roll it into long-term borrowing. I said, boy, you folks get the gold medal for patience, 16 years on short term. So this is the other reason that we have to do this. So I've laid out the different bylaws for you, and what I can tell you in total, and again, on the summary sheet that I've given you, it's just over $4.5 million that has been authorized by previous councils in the past. This is not new. And the amount that's been sitting there in the quote-unquote "short term" is $2.1 million, which leaves us with about $2.4 million, which will be used, and I have checked with our engineering staff, to complete the sewer trunk line. Now, the $2.1 million has been spent to put in a number of sewage collection pipes that are ready to go, but they're not connected yet to the main sewer trunk line. We also have to put in a sewer lift station to ensure that the sewage can be put into the main lines because it doesn't run uphill, as we all know that saying. So we need a lift station for that. And if at any time engineer, Mr. Baxter over there, would like to add something, I'm not the engineering expert here, I'm just trying to explain for council's benefit what it is that we're doing and how we're trying to do it. So I just wondered if you had a bit of a diagram for council's reference, Mr. Baxter, that would lay out the area?
A map here of what's already been built, just so that people can understand what the $2.1 million went on. And these were actually built in two phases, one about 16 years ago and one about two years ago, as I remember it.
Next time, could we make this map a little smaller? I'm so blind.
So maybe over to you, Michael, if you wanted to add any comments about what you've handed out?
The map deliberately has nothing on there that you have to read. I can, I can name all the streets that the pipes are on, but I think the general location's fairly clear to everybody. And as I say, these pipes are built, and the orange line that is on the right-hand side of the area, that's Forest Main. So you can see where the orange line and the red line meet is approximately where we have to build a pump station. And as Andrea said, we did go out to RFP for the design of the pump station. Colwood did select a winner on, council did select a winner or approve a winner on that process, and the contract is right at the end of negotiation right now. They'll be starting work in January on the design of the sewer line that is to be built down the Chosen Road, SUC Road, which is part of the additional money that was approved by the members of the LAS some years ago. So I think that, that's the simple version. I'm here to answer questions.
Councillor Day?
Thank you. My question is just, I mean, I'm in support, obviously, of moving from our short-term borrowing to our long-term borrowing because that's what we need to do. My question is around the counterpetition process for the Central LSA, and I don't, I didn't, perhaps my memory is faulty, but I don't remember the motion that we would go to a counterpetition process. And through that counterpetition process, I'm just wondering if there are single-family homes on perhaps older in-ground disposal systems that are going to be forced to hook up to the system through this process?
The counterpetition process is part of the agreement with the, what used to be called the Upstream Users Development Group in the city and the province, to settle the outstanding sewer issues. And if a majority of the people being petitioned sign the counterpetition, saying they don't wish to have anything to do with this, then nobody will be forced to hook up. In fact, nobody will have the opportunity to hook up unless they join separately at a later date. If less than half, and that's a simple term, it's more complicated than that, but if less than half sign the counterpetition, then everybody, nobody would be forced to hook up, but everybody would end up being paid the, would end up paying the tax to, as part of Central.
So did I understand you correctly to say they can either join up and get the service, or they can pay and not get the service?
No, if they, if they vote against it, they're just not in it at all.
Okay.
They don't have to do anything. They don't pay anything.
Right.
But they can join later, separately, individually, as people are doing all over town, who weren't included in the original LASs.
And, and so if a resident from a neighborhood shaded on this map were to call us up, they could expect what sort of costs to be associated with this petition?
The people in the shaded area... And that's interesting. Sorry, I had this prepared, I was away today, and I had this prepared by somebody else. That, that actually isn't the area of Central. That's the area with the potential to drain into Central. The only people who are members of Central already are ones who are directly adjacent to the sewer line.
Okay.
Any property that's directly adjacent to the existing sewer line is already a member, already will have the right to connect, and will be paying tax no matter what. But the additional line that's to be laid down the Chosen Road, all the people alongside that line are faced with a choice going forward. And we will be contacting them after Christmas to sort of introduce them to this choice and the process that will be going on.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Noll?
Yes, the report mentioned the long-term debt, the $4.5 million plus $250,000 of interest paid to date. On the $2.1 million short-term, quote-unquote, short-term borrowing, will be repaid over a 30-year period via the parcel tax. I was wondering, who has paid the $250,000 of interest to date?
Basically, the city has paid that. I was noting that it was in our financial statements disclosed basically as a note, but legally, we do have to tax. It's just that we can't tax for it until the long-term debt is actually created. So we have not been recovering it yet. The city has been basically paying for that. But legally, according to the bylaws that were established, we have to recover the cost of the principal and the interest via parcel tax. We're doing it over the longest period that we can, and in fact, council revised these bylaws several times, once they were initially only issued for 15 years, and it was basically deemed that that was not going to be a long enough period, you know, in order to try and reduce the amount that would be charged each year. So that's why it's being added. It's legally required.
So basically, the taxpayers have carried the interest burden on that to date, and they will be refunded the money over the 30-year period?
They haven't, no one has been charged this. It basically has come out of a, basically, city's general reserves right now. We have not taxed anyone for that money.
I would beg to differ. Where did the general reserve come from? That came from taxes, did it not?
Sure.
Thank you. I've got several questions. First, through the mayor to engineering, just looking at, and maybe this is just, I was just confused, there's a little, bunch of little red dots in the corner. I don't, I can't read the road. What's that road? Is that, is that, was that just red, somebody accidentally hitting a pen, or is there actually sewer hookups there?
I'm just calling it an ink blot.
It's an ink blot? Okay, good. So I was thinking, holy cow, where are they going? Okay, the second question I have is, and this is to our finance, is with the extra $2.4 million, or whatever it is, yeah, $2.4, going into long-term debt, we have had difficulties in the past where we are getting close to our capacity when it comes to our long-term borrowing. borrowing. How is our long-term borrowing looking?
So I have completed the certificate that's required whereby we look at what we're considered capable of borrowing, that's 25% of our regular annual revenue. With this additional debt, plus there has been some other additional debt taken on this year with the acquisition of the new firefighting apparatus, we are now at 50% of what we're allowed, so we are well below the total amount that we can be borrowing.
Great, thank you. Next question to finance is, what was our short-term interest rate and what will be our long-term interest rate? Will there be a raise or a lowering, or?
It will be increased.
It'll be increased.
And of course, this is through the Municipal Finance Authority where we get the most favorable rates that are available, and short-term has been running about 1.9. Long-term may be running about 2.8, 2.9.
And I'm sorry, you might have already said this, but are we, we're borrowing it over a 30-year period?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
So there is a recommendation there before us, we've had introduction by our finance acting director. Any further comments, questions? Call the question, all those in favor, opposed, motion carries. Moving on to 6.1.2, Report Corporate Communications Manager on Implementing a Citizen Survey in Colwood. Sandra?
Thank you. So we've talked about the citizen survey before. We've talked about the fact that it's going to demonstrate Colwood's commitment to public participation, and also give us a benchmark for, for citizen satisfaction to measure against as we, as we go forward and make improvements in the city. It gives us a way to hear from a broad range, range of citizens, not just those who come to council or who contact us directly. So it's an important way to we, that we're going to gauge citizen satisfaction and identify and address priorities going forward, inform our service improvements and our strategic planning processes and our budgeting process. So, as I said, we've talked about this before, so I'll just sort of herd it along. The reason I brought this report is because I'm hoping that we can do this citizen survey in the last two weeks of January, and that way we'll have the data ready for our strategic planning process in February and for our budgeting process in March. So I'm looking for council's approval to apply a little bit of money to this. As we've discussed in the past, there's some budget from the 2015 budget and some set aside in the 2016 budget. So just looking for council's approval to go ahead and implement this ongoing improvement of public participation practice by implementing a citizen survey in January of 2016.
Counselor Logan?
I'll move the recommendation, your worship.
Any further conversation, discussion? Counselor Martin?
Thank you. Could we, could I make a friendly amendment that we put a specific dollar amount? So it, it says basically the price range will be between 7,500 and 10,000, so could we just put in the motion, how much? I'm, whatever your goal is, or you want 10,000? Yeah.
I actually have got returns, I've asked for three quotes from different companies, and I've got information back from two of them, but not from the third, and so I feel like we're kind of still in the ranging process. I think it could be not to exceed 10,000.
Okay.
I'm happy to, to take their friendly amendment not to exceed $10,000.
Anything further from council? Counselor Day?
I just want to say that I think this is a really welcome initiative. I'm very pleased to see it moving forward. I believe it was when I was first on council, maybe 2004 or '06, something like that, that I first heard about surveys being used in municipalities on Vancouver Island, and some of the interesting things that councils learned from those surveys about what was most important to the citizens. So I think it's a great way to try to get a really good handle on what matters most to our citizens.
Counselor Knoll?
I agree that the survey is necessary. My only concern is that being a telephone survey, you're going to miss out on the entire cellphone crowd, which is almost every young person in our community, and myself and my entire family as well. Is there any way to incorporate cellphones into this survey? I don't think you can get a list of their numbers.
That's a good question that I'll have to ask the polling company. I would like to think that they've advanced their practice enough that they would include cellphones, but it's something I'll confirm for sure. The other thing we can do is, in addition to the telephone polling, which is really the best way to get a random sample, a sort of scientific random self-sample, we could offer it as an electronic survey too, and promote that so that we get an even broader reach. But, but we would want to keep those two sample sets separate because the random sample really is the more scientific set. But we could obviously slice and dice those statistically afterward, too. But I will check, I will check with the polling companies to confirm if they're reaching so, so customers, because that's a valid point.
Thank you. Anyone else? Call the question, then, all those in favor, opposed, motion carries. Next item, 6.1.3, Report from Director of Administration in Regards to Orange Taxi Application.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city received a municipal notice taxi application from the Passenger Transportation Board, which is the authority for any taxis. What am I trying to think of? What do you have chauffeurs for? What am I trying to think of here? I can't think of the proper type of vehicle. I'm sorry. Limousines, thank you. The city, though, has the authority to have input in any kind of application that's coming forward toward the board. So there is a company by the name of Orange Taxi that would like to start a new taxi service where they would operate one Prius taxi cab that would originate out of Suk and Isuk at the Wanda Fugel electoral area and as far as Shawnigan Lake Road, and they would like to operate a special needs taxi that would originate from Greater Victoria, and transportation passengers would be through Sanich Peninsula and any other point on Vancouver Island east of Jordan River, south of Highway 1, and the southern turnoff to Shawnigan Lake. The authority fully lays with the Passenger Transportation Board. The city can make any kind of comments or recommendations, whether they're for it or against it. Those comments would be taken into consideration by the board, although there is no feedback to the city. If the city wanted to follow through on this, they'd only be able to read what they post on their website. Any negative comments are shared with the applicant, who can then try to address them and appease the board. So tonight, we're just asking council for their thoughts on whether they support the application or they don't. Council can either direct that no action be taken, or our past practice has been often supportive, where we would send a letter to the Passenger Transportation Board for the application, and we would also request to, that they encourage the owner of the taxi provider to provide services to people with disabilities on both routes and to use green vehicles. So I'll leave that to council.
Counselor Day?
Thank you. I would move resolution two, as written.
Second.
Further comments or questions from council? Counselor Martin?
Thank you. It doesn't have anything to do with this specific thing, but I'm just curious, what, how, how in B.C. and Colwood and stuff is Uber addressed in this? Like, so if anyone wanted to start running an Uber cab, for example, in, in Colwood, how, do we, do we have any controls right now?
I would anticipate that the Passenger Transportation Board must have some say because they've taken over the whole motor vehicle licensing side of it, whether it's buses, limousines, taxi cabs. So it is a provincial jurisdiction, but it, that's a little bit of an anomaly, that one, so I don't know.
Anything further? Call the question, all those in favor, opposed, motion carries. Item 6.2, Planning and Land Use Committee, 6.2.1, Report Deputy Director of Planning on 3476 Wishart Road. Counselor Logan, or?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In regards to the development at 3476 Wishart Road, an environmental development permit, DP 1411, was issued on January 26, 2015, to allow for the clearing and site preparation of lands that lie within Phase 1 of the proposed development only. Development within Phase 1 started shortly after the development permit was issued. However, at some point, certain work started taking place in Phase 2, which is contrary to the development agreement registered on title. The developer has stated that the works in Phase 2 were necessary to support the development of Phase 1, and states this in his letter attached to the report. Services have also been installed in Phase 2 as part of the servicing of Phase 1. The developer has stated that from a financial perspective and based on the site circumstances, installing services in both phases at the same time is the most efficient option. The developer has now made an application for environmental development permit for works in Phase 2 and the area that is proposed as park, which lies in Phase 3. The permit will address environmental issues surrounding the work in Phase 2, and will be supported by a report by an environmental professional. In addition, a report from a qualified arborist describes the impact from the dumping of soil in Phase 2 on the area that lies within Phase 3, and is proposed to be dedicated as park in the near future. Based on information in this report, a security deposit to cover the cost of remediation of this area may be taken. Security can be required through the development permit. Staff are of the opinion that the recommendation below will allow for an opportunity to address concerns with respect to the area proposed for park purposes, as well as allow the developer to proceed with the development in a timely manner. Therefore, staff recommend that council permit removal of soil and rock and the construction of services within that part of Phase 2 that has already been disturbed by blasting and excavation work, and permit works limited to environmental remediation and replanting in proposed park area within Phase 3. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Logan?
I'll move the recommendation for discussion, your worship.
Second.
Discussion, council? Counselor Knoll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will be opposing this. We already had all of these agreements in place with the Section 219 covenant, which the developer has chosen to completely ignore. I'm not confident that putting more conditions on or changing the conditions at this point will have any more obedience than the Section 219 covenant.
I will be supporting the recommendation in the hopes that this can be a fresh start and that we have a security deposit in place to bring forward the recommendations for environmental protection. I, I am concerned with the, with the transgressions that, that did happen, and, but in, in the end, I think what we want to see is a finished project in as timely a manner as possible with the best possible park space restored in the area that has so far been completely degraded. So I think our best chance of achieving that is with the recommendation here tonight.
Anybody else? Counselor Logan?
Thank you, worship. I don't think anyone would, would disagree that we do, definitely do not condone what, what actions have been taken by the, the developer to date. And unfortunately, it's, it's been uncomfortable and difficult, I think, for both sides, and consumed a hell of amount of, of time. And while it is uncomfortable to support this, I will be supporting it for, for the same reasons that Counselor Day stated, but when I look at it, I look at it through the lens of what, how does the city benefit, or how will the city not benefit if, if we don't allow this project to move forward? And there is absolutely zero benefit to the municipality by letting that project sit and, and go dormant and, and becoming a landscape, you know, moonscape. So I think it is certainly in our best interests as a community to, to see that project through sooner rather than later, and then write a new chapter, quite frankly. So there are some conditions, and I think certainly the city is showing some good faith, and we expect that the developer will do the same, and, and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to just, you know, make the comment that I was disheartened by the manner of which this development has, has been undertaken, and the fact that a lot of these issues could have been resolved in working with staff, and I'm hoping that the developer now has an understanding that that is the best way forward, is working collaboratively with staff to ensure that all the permits and, and all the procedure has been identified. Should this go forward from, a decision from council, I'm looking for that commitment, and I hope it's reiterated to him on behalf of council that we're looking for the best outcome possible. Anyone else? Call the question, then, all those in favor, opposed, motion carries. Item number 6.2.2, Director of Planning Rezoning Application, RZ 15004, outstanding items pertaining to the Royal Bay development.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Rezoning Application, RZ 154, for lands within the Royal Bay area, was brought before council on November 23 of this year. At that meeting, council resolved that prior to scheduling the public hearing, one, staff be directed to investigate options for incorporating the passive house standard concept within the Royal Bay development with the applicant; two, that the applicant provide counsel with a commitment as to when future rezoning applications will be made; and three, that staff be directed to investigate options for protection of Murray's Pond and the surrounding remnant forest with the applicant. With respect to the passive house standard, staff suggest that this rezoning application proceed without a commitment as to if and how the standard will be implemented, and that this item be deferred until a future rezoning application is brought forward. With respect to item two, the letter attached to the council report outlines the developer's commitment to a future rezoning application, and staff are of the opinion that the pending rezoning application will provide an opportunity to address concerns that were previously raised in regards to the scope of the current application. With respect to item three, the item of Murray's Pond is also addressed by the developer in the letter attached to the report. The area that is the subject of the current rezoning application does not include or encroach on the area surrounding Murray's Pond. Therefore, staff feel that given a larger scale rezoning is pending, it would be appropriate to address this item as part of the next rezoning application. Based on the aforementioned, staff recommend that council direct staff to proceed with scheduling the public hearing on the bylaw for this project at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move the recommendation, your worship.
Second.
Discussion, council? Counselor Day?
Thank you. In regards to the number one, which was investigating options for incorporating the passive house standard concept, I am wondering, there used to be an EnerGuide rating that we were pursuing, I believe it was EnerGuide 80, and I'm just wondering if that standard has been considered?
An EnerGuide AD has already been absorbed into the building code, and so there's no reason to require that particular rating anymore. I think that in the building code, it's, it's going up to 82. But the, the interesting thing is that as you, as you go, make houses more and more energy efficient, it costs more to build them, until you reach a sudden, certain point where, where it drops, and that's passive house standard. Passive referring to the fact, basically, that you don't need a heating system, so you lose all that expense, and that helps offset the cost. And I've done the calculations of how we achieve our goals for energy use in the OCP, and you can't actually achieve that goal without switching all of our development to passive house. And that's not a simple thing. And that's not a simple thing because it takes some learning on the part of builders to do that. And one of the reasons my comments make reference to multi-year developments as being the place to start is to expect any builder to learn how to do this and implement it on, say, 100 houses is a big thing to ask. But when you're building 2,000 houses, I mean, it seems absolutely impossible to me that you'll ever build 2,000 houses without having that standard imposed upon you anyway, when you look at the way the world's going. And it does benefit the future residents enormously. Unfortunately, the benefit to the builder is little understood at this point. It's been demonstrated by Bernhardt Brothers, and that's why we'll be providing that information to this developer amongst others. Because they have carefully documented their passive house construction, all of its costs and its benefits to them, as well as to the homeowners. So there's a huge benefit to the community in going in that direction because you create a housing stock that is cheaper for the people living in. The mortgage plus the energy is far cheaper than a regular house. Mortgage is higher than the energy is, between $50 and $150 a year to run the house, which, as you know from your own bills, is an enormous saving. It's less clear for the builder because obviously they pay the additional cost upfront. And unless they can sell that house for additional cost, there is, you know, they're going to lose some money on that. Additional cost is about 3% compared to current building codes. It will change over time as the current building code, you know, keeps ratcheting up. And at some point, passive house will actually become on a par or cheaper because of this effect of not having to build heating. So, I mean, I think that's why this is going to be a difficult thing to implement, but a necessary thing to implement.
So I guess my follow-up question is, if we leave this to a later date, what can we do in the meantime? I know there is an association of the passive home builders here in Victoria. They did make a presentation to council. There are at least two passive homes locally that you could look at. There's one in, I think it's Oak Bay. And so I don't know if that's the Schumanns or not. But anyways, there are local examples. And certainly some dedicated individuals who might be able to provide more information before the next rezoning comes forward. And I'm just wondering if there's anything that we could do?
As far as I know, there's only two officially passive house, although there are other buildings that meet that standard. They just were never registered. But the two that are most interesting are the ones that were built by a professional builder who did it, you know, to make money. And the second building is actually a six-unit townhouse in Victoria. And, you know, his experience is very, very instructive and very positive.
Okay, thank you. My last comment is in regards to Murray's Pond and the surrounding remnant forest, which every time a home is built in Royal Bay, there are more and more people walking through and enjoying the beautiful remnant ecosystem there. There are eagles, ospreys, owls. I have seen them there not that long ago. And I feel strongly that all the homes that are moving into the area should be contributing towards the protection of that very important water source for all of the wild animals. There's quite an assortment of wildlife remaining in an area that is becoming increasingly urbanized. And yet, the wildlife is still managing to do seemingly quite well. And limiting the human-wildlife disagreements, for lack of a better word, would be beneficial. Just in terms of putting up some signage, maybe to let people know what things live there and possibly putting up some barriers that might be as simple as split-rail fencing, just to delineate places where you should go and places where you shouldn't. So I am wishing that all the homes, as they develop in Royal Bay, were contributing to that park because they will be contributing to increasing pressures on that park.
Any further comments or counsel? Called question, then, folks? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Looking forward, then, to 6.2.3, Memorandum Planning Department Development Permit Application, DP 1515, 2128, 2132, and 2138, Suk Road.
Thank you, Worship. It might surprise council to see a development permit issue come forward to council, but this is just simply a heads-up that we are prepared to issue a development permit for this project. And it does look quite a bit different than what was originally proposed at the time of rezoning. And the covenant that was registered on title as a condition of rezoning spoke to the site plan needing to be maintained through the process to development permit stage. They're actually closely meeting the requirements of that clause in the covenant. The site plan is not changing, but the form and character of the exterior of the buildings are changing. So this is, if anything, a heads-up to council. And if there's questions from the public, we're more than happy to assist with those as the development proceeds. Thank you.
Any questions, counsel? Comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to comment that I'm not terribly pleased with the way that the new proposal looks as it does not provide the step back that the previous version did. And that when this was presented to a public hearing, you know, it's kind of unfair to the public and perhaps even to council to have something that looks so different come forward in place of the previously offered rendering. So I would just like to say that I would have preferred to see us retain more of a two-story ambience by having the third story more step back as it was.
Anybody else? There's no recommendation required, staff? It's just an information?
Your Worship, it's simply a heads-up of the changes.
Moving on, then, 6.2.4, Development Variance Permit, DVP 1515, from 520 Mountview Avenue.
Thank you, Your Worship. The committee last week received an overview of an application stating a development variance permit application has been requested to allow for an increase in lot coverage to permit what really is a very minor addition and to convert the existing building from a martial arts studio to a gymnastics school, adding that the applicant is requesting an increase of the maximum site coverage pursuant to Section 9.2.04 of the Land Use Bylaw, from 40% to 48% of the site. Although it's interesting to note that back in 2011, the subdivision was created, actually created a non-conforming site coverage of 47%. So the request really is only for a 1% lot coverage increase beyond what is currently found on the subject property. Counselor, who has been by the subject property, will already know that the building already exists. And they're just simply looking to add a second-floor front addition, which will increase, as I say, the lot coverage by 1%. It was also interesting to note that, and to their credit, that the owner has recognized that there's a potential conflict between vehicles and wee little ones that will be leaving the site and has taken steps to rectify that by eliminating or reducing some parking in front of the structure. Right now, the structure looks pretty unfinished and disheveled with gravel. So you'll see some nice street trees that will delineate the road frontage thanks to engineering, I believe, that suggested that as well. And to create a better environment for pickup and drop-off for the patrons of that site. So it was recommended by committee, and I so moved that development variance permit number DVP 15-015 be authorized for issuance, which would have the effect of varying the maximum site coverage pursuant to Section 9.2.04 and the Land Use Bylaw number 151, from 40 to 48% on the property described as strata lot one, Section 70 Esquimalt District Strata Plan EPS 519, together with an interest in the common property in proportion to the unit in element of the strata lot as shown on the Form V, 520 Mountview.
Discussion, Council? Counselor Day?
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that at the planning and land use meeting, the applicant spoke about a traffic study, which he had done a couple of years ago, where he had looked at what percentage of his patrons are dropping off and picking up rather than coming in. And it was a very, very low percentage that are actually staying there. And there's also, he has made an arrangement with the church next door to utilize their parking lot as well, which is a safer access point for pedestrians. And I think overall, the street-side amenity landscaping that he's putting in are going to make it more attractive and less likely to have conflict with pedestrians or cyclists. Both will be in better shape.
Counselor Martin?
Thank you. I'm supportive of it. But I do have a question. I'm just curious. And this is to staff through you. If this fails and there's a non-conforming... So we're basically asking them to go from 40 to 48, but there's already a building there that's non-conforming at 47. How do you reconcile that? Like, I don't think this is going to fail, but I'm just saying. I mean, how can you ask us to go from 40 to 48 when 47 already exists? Like, it seems...
Your Worship, we've identified the nonconformity. We haven't explored the legal ramifications if this variance was not approved. We would likely have the conversation with the applicant as to their next steps, whether they would proceed with another application or proceed with the development at all, and then potentially get some legal advice on potential legal exposures that the city would face because of the nonconformity.
Sorry, just as a follow-up. Yeah, thank you. What I'm confused of that is that this is a 2011. And if this is a 2011 subdivision that went from 40 to 47 that's non-conforming, why is this coming forward to us now? Like, why didn't it come forward to us in 2011? To move it from 40 to 47? And then they would just be coming forward today to ask to go from 47 to 48?
Your Worship, to my knowledge, the application brought forward by the applicant was our first indication that there was a nonconformity. I don't believe it was identified, obviously, at the time of subdivision. It wasn't an issue that was corrected through a variance application. So I suspect that it wasn't until the application was made that it came to our attention.
I'll ask off-line. Thank you.
Anybody else? Called question, then? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? 6.2.5, Development Variance Permit, Application, DVP 15-017, for 324 Goldstream Avenue.
Thank you, Worship. Well, you know what they say, third time's a charm. So this property is before us, I guess, for the third time. And we're happy that they are. Last week, committee received an overview of the application stating a development variance permit application has been requested to facilitate the construction of a wellness center consisting of two stories of office space over a concrete parking structure that would be in Phase One, right up against Goldstream Avenue. Mitzi Dean, who is the Executive Director of the Pacific Center Family Services Association, gave a brief presentation to committee stating that Pacific Center is looking to create what's called a wellness village to support the West Shore services that they provide. As we all know, Pacific Center has been around, been open since 1968 for programs ranging from counseling to youth services. And the executive director stated that they support around 1,000 people every year, roughly 25% of which are Callwood residents. Mrs. Dean stated that the land purchased at 324 Goldstream is directly adjacent to the Whale Road Family Center at 345 Whale Road. And Pacific Center is excited to work with the Whale Road facility to allow families to use both services at both sites. This project actually is, it's quite a win-win situation for that site as well as the neighboring site, which is the Callwood Dental Group. Anyone who patronizes the Callwood Dental Group knows that that site is challenging for parking. This project seeks to subdivide and consolidate the area with the Callwood Dental Group by providing adequate parking for that facility. Also, although it's not part of this, part of the plans and probably one of the most exciting things from my perspective is the connection that this project will bring for pedestrians and cyclists that will run from Goldstream Avenue right through and eventually connect to the Galpin Goose Trail. So it will dissect a key portion of the city, opening it up, which is a win-win unto itself. Committee was very supportive, and it was recommended by committee. And I so moved that development variance permit number DVP-15-017 be authorized for issuance, which would have the effect of, A, relaxing the minimum off-street loading requirements pursuant to Section 2.3 of the Land Use Bylaw, number 151, from one space to zero spaces; B, relaxing of the minimum allowable side yard setback pursuant to Section 7.5D.07 of the Land Use Bylaw, number 151, from four meters to 1.0 meters; and C, relaxing the minimum off-street parking requirements pursuant to Section 7.5D.11 of the Land Use Bylaw, number 151, from 61 spaces to 44 spaces on the property described as Lot One, District Lot One, Esquimalt, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Discussion, Council? Counselor Day?
Thank you. Just a couple of points that I think might be interesting for council or anyone listening. In regards to the number of parking spaces that's provided, there are more parking spaces being provided on this site than were provided in the original Queen Alexandria family building on Whale Road. So that is an improvement. on Whale Road, so that is an improvement. And looking at the land use by law, the designation is at the highest requirement for parking, so the variance, I think, is reasonable. The side yard setback is coinciding with the special arrangement that they have been making with the Callwood Dental Group, so the setback that's being relaxed is adjacent to the above-ground parking, so it isn't a building against building issue. And the only other thing I had to add was, along with Gordy, I think the first time we talked about trying to create an access point between Goldstream and Whale Road went back to around nineteen ninety-nine or two thousand, so it's been a long time coming, and I think it is a very valuable opportunity for the city, so.
Anyone else? Councillor Martin?
Through each his staff. Wilford Road and Nob Hill Road is eventually supposed to be going through, like, my understanding, down the road from Whale through to Goldstream, and I don't know if that's official or unofficial. Do you know, is that unofficial, is that official, or is that just a dream? What's the idea there?
It's a dream.
Is it just a dream that will never be fulfilled?
That is, in the transportation plan, that is to go through as an active transportation corridor only.
Okay.
So that would be, and this is actually right in line with that, that's exactly what we want to see.
Yeah, and that was my question. I just wanted to make sure that it conformed to that.
Maybe we'll get your smart card in there.
Yeah. Scooter at least.
Anyone else? Called question, all those in favor, opposed, motion carries. Moving into six point three Protective Services, six point three point one Protective Services Committee Discussion on Animal Health and Welfare.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I can address this for you if you'd like, I think. So, sorry, just get my bearings here. At our Protective Services Committee meeting, we received an excerpt of the CRD Animal Regulation Impounding Bylaw number one four six five, which was circulated to the committee by Mr. Don Brown, manager of the CRD Animal Control Services. And the, he was asking if Callwood Council could consider adding similar wording to Callwood's current animal control bylaw because it specifically addressed the issue of cruelty to animals. We had a discussion, and it was determined that we would bring this forward to council for their information, and we received the information there at the Protective Services Committee, and so it is included here for your information. There is some fairly specific wording on the attachment, which is highlighted for you from point twenty-seven on down through to point twenty-eight. Maybe I could just illuminate you further, that the committee really felt that the wording was maybe more specific than what Callwood would like to be, and perhaps it's enough that the CRD Animal Control Bylaw has this wording in it. It does speak to not being able to chain your animal, that they have to have clean dishes, that they have to have sufficient exercise, including daily opportunities to be free of a confined area, exercised regularly. Has a lot of other details with regard to animals that normally reside outside. And it says that no person may cause an animal to be hitched, tied, fastened, or to a fixed object where a choke collar or choke chain forms part of the secure, or where a rope or cord is tied directly around the animal's neck.
There's a number of ones in there, and, you know, I mean, changes like this come based on experiences, and unfortunately, in our region, we did see a increase in numbers of incidences. Even those ones, just, you know, people bringing their pet along for the ride while they went shopping in the heat of the summer, and, you know, that's covered off in the clause, it's strengthened in there that that can't be, that's not an allowable practice. So this, you know, certainly will help those instances where people are standing outside your door looking for some heavy object to smash your window out, you know, and that kind of thing. So there are a number of items there. Any comments and questions? Do we want to have this forwarded through to bylaw to be included? Because we'll need a recommendation of such.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I am personally unsure as to what the ramifications of taking this forward would be, whether it would put us on the hook for extra, you know, charges in terms of legal defense of our bylaw, et cetera. So perhaps what we could do is forward it through to staff and ask for a report. I wasn't, we weren't sure at the committee whether council wanted to go down this road or not, so we brought it directly to council.
Certainly can be, you know, put back to our bylaw officer for some further information. Staff?
If I may, your worship, the CRD Animal Regulation contract is coming up for its second year review in September of next year. We would have to let them know if we're going to do a second year and another year. And one of the resolutions that was passed by council when that current two-year agreement was adopted was that we would revisit the whole animal control issue and what service providers are out there early in 2016, and bring something forward to council by May of 2016. So this is a good time to be looking at our bylaw anyway, and making sure it's covering all of the needs and all of the things that council would like to see it cover, because that bylaw would have to be in place in order to put it out to service providers to let them know what our expectations are. And over time, because we've always been serviced through the CRD Animal Control, we're slowly working our way to having our bylaw as similar to their bylaw as we can or as agreeable by council, because they don't have to worry about borders then. If we have the same rules that the CRD has, it's much easier for all of the bylaw enforcement officers to just know the rules instead of having to determine what municipality they're in and what are those rules. So it is something that we are working toward for early 2016.
Then it would be appropriate, I think, councillor Day, to make the recommendation for staff to include this in there.
Yeah, I would move that we ask staff to include this in the review of the animal control in early 2016.
Second. Any further discussion? Councillor Nall?
I have no problem with the motion. I'm just commenting that we now have, I think, three levels of animal cruelty regulations in place. We have the municipal level, we have the CRD level, and we have a provincial level, and I'm not sure which one takes precedence over which and who has the authority to issue tickets under each. So I would really like that clarified in the report as well, because if we have a bylaw that exceeds provincial guidelines, can we even enforce that? This would be my question.
And how do we get chickens out of Callwood? It's the other thing I'd like to know. What if this bylaw controls?
So then the recommendation would be to have staff investigate this alongside and can make a comparison of the existing regulatory bodies that deal with this.
If I may, it is important to note, too, that when there's concurrent authorities, we do have to make sure that anything that we're doing and putting into place is in compliance with what the province will allow or approve, as well as for the ticketing side of it, that's when your municipal ticket bylaw will define, when you have bylaws that have fine schedules that the officers can issue tickets on, or the RCMP, it will define who all the individuals are designated to actually write those tickets. And sometimes it includes some of our directors, depending what the topic item is. So that is defined in our MTI bylaw.
Good. All good? Councillor Nall? You looked like you were going to pose a question. You're good? Called question, then, all those in favor?
Are you sure you're good?
Opposed, motion carried. Items number six point four point one, under Economic Development and Innovation, a verbal report from our CAO in regard to the EDO position.
Is this two?
Now... No, it's two parts. So this is just the money part, and then the other will be a representation part.
Your worship, this particular draft motion came forward from the Economic Development and Innovation Committee after several discussions about proceeding or not proceeding with the hiring of an economic development officer at this point in time. I'm not going to read out the entire motion to you, but essentially, it's suggesting that we postpone the hiring of the economic development officer until January of 2017, and use the funds from, the remaining funds from 2015 to pay for the funding for the South Vancouver Island Economic Development Association for 2015, and for the allotment to that same organization for 2016. And then carry over the balance of that 2015 funding into the 2016 budget to use for the various initiatives that were proposed in the motion. So if there's any questions, be pleased to answer them.
Open it up to council? Question? Councillor Day?
The only concern that I have with this recommendation is that it feels to me that we're taking a bit of a step back towards our economic driver being strictly housebuilding. And while that's not a bad thing, it doesn't lead to long-term economic independence for Callwood. So I don't mind, I guess, doing that in the short term while we get our ducks in a row, but for me, economic development is not just about, you know, supporting the building of neighborhoods. It is about supporting the development of neighborhood amenities, bakeries and daycares and things that help our community to function and compete with neighboring municipalities for their shopping dollars.
Anybody else? I'll just go to say that on the meetings that I have been involved in thus far, that's not the level that they're targeting. It's a much higher level. They've got, you know, marine and aviation and higher levels of targets in there. I don't have the file right up here that I can read from in that regard, so it's going to be...
Sorry, do you mean this South Vancouver Island? I just mean this using of our, you know, monies that we set aside for an economic development officer to augment, you know, our deficits in planning and dealing with the large number of proposals coming forward that we anticipate.
Good. Councillor Martin?
Thank you. To address councillor Day, or address her question or statement, I agree with her, actually a hundred percent. The difficulty was that as we continued to work as a group and as a staff, we found that the definitions of what economic development was, was still needed to be worked on, and that there's a lot of still background work that has to get done, which the concern was, you bring on an economic development officer right now, and if you haven't clearly defined exactly what you're talking about and everything else, then we may end up hiring the wrong person. So what's better is, is we've got the South Vancouver Island, where do we find the funding for that, since council has decided that they were going to be supportive? So the thought process was, okay, this is where the pool of money can come from. And then for 2016, there's a lot of work that the Economic Development Committee needs to do just from a background and support system, so that as we move into 2017 and as we start interviewing, hopefully, middle to late of 2016, we have a better definition of exactly what our economic development officer will be doing and the work that it can be done. And planning is an important aspect of it, but not the end-all, which I agree with, but it's, there's definitely shortfalls right now when it comes to planning, getting work done, so that was the thought process at least. Yeah, if they stop being on holidays and actually do some work.
I'll take care of it, boys, don't worry.
Yes. They do, I would like to say this officially, planning does a fantastic job, they're working very hard. There's just too much of it.
How's that? Feel better?
Is there anything more, but we do need a recommendation?
Ian wants to say something.
Ian?
Madam Mayor, if I could just add a few more comments, I think it's already been said, we needed to address the backlog really for the development industry. It's not specifically saying that that's the target market, we just need to address it, because, quite frankly, it's our business community that give us the reputation we have, and my experience anyway has been that the development community is a very vocal one, and they can really make or break our perception of business friendliness. So that was one of the issues. Another one that is going to come forward as a result of this, if council approves this motion tonight, is this whole process that we have to get into about acknowledging who we are and where we want, who we want to be, and that's largely to address our external image, which we're going to have to deal with regardless of whether we are doing economic development in-house or doing it externally through the SVIED, SVIEDA.
VIDA.
We're going to have to do that, because if we're doing it with the region, we need to be able to clearly explain to the regional, region who we are, or this regional group, who we are and what benefits we have to offer to site selectors and investors to set us apart from the rest of the region. And I don't think, at least my experience has been that, I'll say, the Victoria-centric perception of Callwood is not clear. I don't know if they really know who we are out here. So that exercise has to happen, and hopefully, if council agrees to the motion, we'll start having discussions with council about how we could carry that out in the new year. The other one is, there was some pressing issues that were identified by the business community some time ago that haven't been addressed, and they're largely not something that could be addressed by an economic development officer, there's something that needs to be addressed here with existing staff on existing policies. So we're going to try and start chiseling away at some of those, and the committee's going to be looking at one of them in the near future, being the business license bylaw. And lastly, it was reminded to me at the last meeting that we cannot lose sight of the economic development strategy, which does address more than just the development community. So I think what we've committed to do at the committee level at least is start making sure that we have that economic development strategy front and center in our agendas on a regular basis, even if we're not doing something at that meeting, at least it's there to remind us that we have initiatives that we have to start tackling in that document.
Madam Mayor, I would move items one through seven in the recommendations.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. And then there's the added item to that section, folks, the one that was left at your table side, which, this is something that we need... side, which this is something that we need to, to do as far as making an appointment to this organization as a member of the society. So it's a bit different than the board of directors portion of things. And if you read, I'd asked the question whether this has to be a member of council or, you know, one of our citizen rep folks or whoever in there, and received back that they are hoping for a municipal member, given that, given that municipal, our municipal participation in the new model was approved through a motion to council, it would be ideal if each municipal, municipal representative is a member of council. There is another mechanism right underneath that says council may choose to delegate the authority to represent their membership to their C A O, as long as this person is authorized to exercise the rights of membership. They're still working that part of it out with legal counsel. It would be my suggestion that as the Chair of Economic Development, that that, that appointment should be through to Rob, Counselor Martin, but for the purposes of the upcoming meeting in January where Counselor Martin's away, Counselor Trace is away, and I am away. And thus far, I've been the only one in attendance to these meetings. Ian has been in attendance as well. It would be that my suggestion that we additionally make an appointment for Ian to at least represent us at that January fifteenth meeting, because that's where they will be approving the constitution and bylaws and some of that background business oriented stuff. So he's familiar with the package. It's been, it's been provided to him at this point, and that's kind of where I am with, with things right now. But I'll leave it up to you guys to discuss and put forward. Well, just that we need to appoint a municipal representative.
Just before we make a motion, I just have a concern, which is because of the whatever versus Torgramson issue, that because this is a society, which is what the Torgramson, Schlenker, that's it, Schlenker versus Torgramson case. Because that, whoever is the, the representative, when an issue is coming forward to council, that person may need to step aside because of that ruling while council is considering it. I'm just wondering if that would put the C A O in a difficult position. Because he'd need to speak to the item, but wouldn't supposed to be being there.
Well, this is a constitution and bylaw approval meeting, so it would be a wonderful question for him to take forward and, you know. It is a nonprofit organization, and as I understand it, the municipal representatives are not part of that body. That's a standalone body that's over there. This is sort of a, a participating members, but it's, it's all...
Yeah.
But it's a great question to put forward to them in point blank form.
I have worries.
The only thing though would be, C A O does not vote on budgetary stuff. So he would never be affected by that ruling, staff?
No, the ruling doesn't just apply to money. It applies to everything.
It has to do with money.
It's a financial thing. You can't vote on anything that's financial, but he can't vote on anything. So he, like, I don't, I'm asking staff, is that, is he safe, since he can't vote on stuff?
Madam Mayor, the Schlenker case specifically precludes a member of council from, from sitting on a society as a board member and participating in a decision of council that affects that society. I've sat on, as a matter of fact, it was an economic development board. I sat on an economic development board up island specifically to avoid the Schlenker case situation with a member of council. So I was replacing a member of council in that particular case for that reason. But there is a lot of questions around the structure, the governance structure of this organization that I haven't been able to dive into yet.
Well, I would, I would move that, that Mr. Howitt be our representative at the January meeting for S V I D A, or whatever they're calling themselves.
Second.
Any further conversation? Counselor Nault?
I have no problem with that. What I would like them to do is to rewrite their bylaws. Bylaw two point three, to be eligible for government membership, okay? To be eligible to be a government member, an applicant must be a municipality or a First Nation. While some of us are rather large, I don't think any of us quite is a municipality or a First Nation at this point. I would really encourage them to proofread their bylaws before they publish them.
Come on, it could be the big cheese.
And I will ask the question about the other through an email process and circulate the response to you when we get it. So we can deal with that one in January. Anybody else comment on that one? We have a mover and a shaker, so all those in favor? Opposed, motion carried? Ian, it'll be you. Six point five, transportation public infrastructure, six point five point one, Mackenzie Avenue interchange, rapid transit proposal, go.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The deputy to the city engineer presented options put forward for the Mackenzie interchange project and noted that the most favorable was option one and is the least expensive to build. Staff was looking for recommendation from committee that council write a letter supporting a dedicated transit lane to be part of the project, as it would be a huge benefit to the west shore. He also suggested that the money saved by proceeding with option one could be invested in dedicated transit lane. Committee moved that, committee recommend that council write a letter to the province requesting that transit or H O V lanes be installed on the new highway as part of the project. But before I move that, I would like to turn it over to the deputy, to the engineer. I think he has some further information for us.
Thank you, Counselor Nault. I spoke with, with James Wadsworth and Adrian South, staff members at B C Transit, and they reiterated that it's very important to the effectiveness of transit, that they be transit lanes only and not transit H O V. So what I, what I would respectfully request is that we, that we put forward a motion or send a letter asking for specifically transit lanes. And Ian, Director Planning had some further comments on that as well.
Thank you. I just reiterate the comments. I, I also had some discussions with B C Transit, and we are, as Emmett knows, working with the ONI group to explore options for dedicated transit in front of their frontage, and whether that be a interim measure for, you know, queue jumping for transit and a long-term connection to dedicated transit, really having a, the T C H is the linchpin to improvements we're doing in Colwood and then what's happening right now in Victoria and Sanage.
Yeah, and if I could just follow up on that, I think the, the scale of development we're talking about doing, considering that we have no room to build new vehicular lanes, we really need a robust transit presence to pull this off. And so anything we can do to support B C Transit in their goals is going to help us.
So you're saying take off the H O V in this recommendation? Is that what we're moving to?
Thank you. I'd like to continue with that. I think the reason that committee recommended transit or H O V lanes is that committee feels that transit is not adequately serving the western communities as it is. To dedicate an entire lane to transit when they don't provide the necessary buses under the current system seems to me to be rather a waste of time. Certainly, if we made them transit H O V lanes for now, if transit shows they can improve, we can always remove the H O V. I'll point out that Vancouver itself has shared transit and H O V lanes on some of their major thoroughfares, and it works very well. So I, I will not be supporting that change. I understand transit's request, and I understand staff wishing to support transit, but I haven't honestly seen that transit has done an awful lot to support western communities.
What Counselor Nault said? I concur one hundred percent. I concur. I think he said it well.
There you go. We need a second or for...
I second it.
Okay, there we go. Now, Counselor Day?
I concur.
Thanks. I would be very, very happy if the province will just build the lane, and we can argue about who goes in it later. So I'm happy with wording it as transit or transit slash H O V. I think it has a better chance of getting provincial buy-in as a transit lane, because the province is going to want to be seen, to be supporting transit. Meanwhile, they're not giving us nearly enough to create the transit system that we need in Victoria.
Anybody else? And I would just say that in the Transit Future Plan, it is identified that, that there is a potential of a transit linkage in there. I lived on the mainland when they first started that H O V, and it was buses only for the longest time. And then it was added into the, the regular traffic as long as you had, and it went, it was three or more people. It's down to two or more people now in the, in that H O V lane in Vancouver.
I just want to say, I, I'm going to stick to transit, so I won't be supporting the motion as it's worded with transit and H O V, not because I'm opposed to it, but because I think it's got a better chance of getting some actual roadway built if it says transit.
If I could point out, if you study the plans for those interchanges, we have a good section of road that could already be transit or H O V if they would just eliminate the through traffic, say, that's going across Helmskin. If you're going into town at rush hour, you see all the people doing what's called a rat run around the intersection. The same potential exists for the rat run around the new Mackenzie intersection. If we could eliminate that and just make it transit and H O V, we would have a few kilometers of transit and H O V line at no extra cost.
We have the recommendation as is before us. Yeah, it's an as is at this point. As he is, folks, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five. And those not in favor? I would have to say not in favor as well, so, but it passed as it is.
And if I may make as a second motion, that in building the intersection, that they consider the possibility of what I just suggested, of eliminating the through traffic that can bypass the Helmskin interchange and the through traffic that could bypass Mackenzie interchange in order to make those transit and H O V lanes only.
I'm sure that our Deputy Director of Engineering can come up with the appropriate wording on that, because we've had those conversations. I had that conversation with the minister in the Helmskin issue, and that's preceding, you know, even the potential at Mackenzie, so we can come up with that. A second or for that motion, folks? Any further conversation? All those in favor? Opposed, none? Yay. It carries. Six point, five point two, Machosen Road, traffic calming.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There have been ongoing issues with speeding on Machosen Road. A petition and several complaints have been received over the last couple of years. Staff has developed a plan to deal with this issue on an interim basis until the road is redeveloped to the standards of the master transportation plan. So committee moved that it be recommended to council that traffic calming measures on Machosen Road include the expansion of the thirty kilometer per hour zone, installation of additional school zone, playground zone signage, and two electronic speed readers. I will add, we already have the speed readers in stock. Installation of a pedestrian crossing with flashing amber lights near the bus stop. And that the speeding zone of the road be adjusted to include both school and playground zones. The reasoning for that is the school zone is active eight to five school days. Only a playground zone is dawn to dusk every day of the year. School road zone, school zone road improvement as part of the master transportation plan be considered as a budget priority, and that we will refer to budget. And that council write to the R C M P to request greater police presence in this area, and that larger, more visible school zone signs be used.
Second or please? Discussion? Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Worship. The only issue that I have, I think, in this one is the, the expansion of the thirty K zone. What that does, it, you know, it sets up a real enforcement issue and expectation. And it's a, you know, even with the R C M P out there, it's a, it's a temporary solution. And what I hear is, oh, great, another thirty K zone that has an impact on, on services and volunteer response to the fire station because it's a main route. And it really doesn't tend to solve, solve the issue. Coming down Carandale is an example. It's more of a, you know, it's a nuisance, and it's really probably not an appropriate route to have a thirty K zone, but, and, and there's mixed messages as to whether it's successful or not. I think what needs to happen is more of an engineered solution, and the city, you know, we need to, and I know it's coming down the pipe, but we need to provide some, some proper infrastructure in that area to, to actually solve it once and for all and make it more of a deterrent, not a thirty K zone that, you know, that won't get enforced. Realistically, it, it won't get enforced because there just aren't enough members on the road to be able to enforce it. So from that perspective, you know, I find it hard, hard to, to support the motion with that particular section in it. Thanks.
Counselor Chong?
Thank you, through your worship. I think I have to agree with Counselor Logan there. I don't think expanding the thirty K zone will make people slow down. I think there needs to be physical action on the road. And I also, I, I disagree with the additional school zone and playground signage, only because I thoroughly believe that people will also ignore those. So I think it might be wasted dollars on extra signage when people will ignore them. Thank you.
Counselor Day?
Thank you. I support the additional signage, and I'm not saying that people won't ignore it when there are no kids on the road, but the, what is, the reality is that Dunsmere Middle School has got school traffic on both sides of it, both on Machosen Road and on Painter Road. So this is acknowledging that there are kids, and I know they're middle school, but they're dumb bunnies just the same when they're in middle school. Well, they're talking, and they're thinking about something else, and they're running across the road because they're late for hockey or something. And I think that we need to recognize that whether it's middle school, high school, or elementary school, motorists need to take extra care, especially when there's children on the roadway. I think when they see children on the roadway, they will tend to obey those signs. I think they probably will ignore them when there aren't pedestrians on the side of the road. But hopefully, this is just the easy part of the many steps that need to be taken to reduce the speeds that are being driven on that road. So I, I'm hopeful that... So I, I'm hopeful that more signage and then more and more, I think the flashing light is going to do a lot with the crosswalk and so extra, extra signage and, and just being aware because the tennis courts are used, the playing fields are used, parking is more and more moving towards Machosen Road.
No tennis court anymore?
I know, I know, but that the tennis courts are being used to park and go play soccer on those fields on Saturday and Sunday. So a school zone alone, I don't think would do it there. It, it is a playground.
Counselor Nault?
I agree wholeheartedly with part of that, those comments. Our speed zones in all of Callwood are totally disregarded. A sign doesn't do anything. We don't get any enforcement that I can see. I've had complaints about speeding on Lagoon, Ocean, Milburn, Machosen, Suk, et cetera, Lagoon, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And unless you have police out there issuing tickets, people are not going to obey the speed line, limits. I don't know where to go with that. I would suggest perhaps hire some auxiliary constables that are in charge of only issuing tickets. Or the second thing would be maybe Callwood could institute a photo radar program.
Yep, I want you to run on that one.
And, and I believe, I believe the deputy engineer has a comment he would like to, to add.
Thank you, Counselor Nault. Your worship, in speaking with our director of corporate administration, I don't think we can move ahead with the, the speed, the speed change at this point because we have to update bylaw number 1121 prior to that happening, so that's correct.
The, the city of Callwood has a speed regulation bylaw and in that bylaw, it defines that all of the speed, all of this, excuse me, street speed limits are 50 kilometers an hour unless it's otherwise posted by the Ministry of Transportation or the Motor Vehicle Act or defined in the bylaw. And the current bylaw has, I just jotted down, they have 29 locations that are 30-kilometer zones, 40-kilometer zones, there's three locations, and 160-kilometer zone, which is the VMP from Suk to Latoria. Outside of what's identified in those there, everything else is 50. So in order to effect that change in the speed limit, you actually have to bring a bylaw forward and identify that area as a reduced speed limit.
So, if I may, your worship, so moving ahead, if we were to do that, we would take that offline and bring that back again as, as a bylaw, but with your direction here. And then we would, we can go ahead and put the speed reader boards in that will show 50K, just to alert people to what their speed is right now. And we could affect that one pretty quickly and any sign is changed as you want to do. And then, of course, the ped crossing and the road improvements would go to the budget.
Yeah, I'm, I'd kind of be wanting to not be letting them know about a 50 if we're in the works of planning to change it to a 30 because they're getting, gonna, gonna be trained electronically, you know. Counselor Nault?
Yes, to me, the recommendation is that those changes be made. The procedure to do that is obviously going to have to be through amending the bylaw. So I guess staff will take care of the niceties of, of the motion to make sure we stay legal. But I believe that the expansion of those zones is about the only way we're going to have any control over speed in that area, short of putting a policeman on every corner, which...
Speed launch? So what's best staff in this, knowing that we have a bylaw to, somebody's pointing?
I had something to say, but you can finish your comments.
You know, knowing that we can't really proceed with the recommendation that requires another process before it, so...
No, through you, your honor. The process is that you can put a recommendation on the table, or excuse me, a council resolution on the table directing staff to do something, it's just staff cannot affect that speed limit change nor put up the signs making the change or anything like that until that bylaw has been adopted. So you can tell us to go work on that and bring the bylaw back, but they can't actually do the work until that bylaw is in place.
Implement it. Okay. So we understand that, folks, right? All right, so we have the motion on the floor that is as it is and seconded. Anybody else? Counselor Chung and then Counselor Martin?
I'm not against the whole thing. Like, I, I believe that the electronic speed readers... I believe the electronic speed readers work and I also believe that the installation of the pedestrian crossing with flashing amber lights would be effective. I just don't want the rest. And so I'm wondering if council would be interested on voting on the items separately?
I would support that.
Thank you, your worship. I was wondering if I could speak to the, the one thing about the, the 50-kilometer speed zone for the flashing, the flashing speed reader board. Where I had intended to put one of those is at the top of the hill as you come out of the gravel pit and that is in advance of the 30K zone. And that's where there, there's issues with speed being up around 65, 70K and we'd like to deal with that as a separate issue and then we can alert them to any speed changes later, but we just want them to slow down at that point.
And I missed your recommendation, I'm sorry.
She wanted to sever.
Oh, sever them? Okay, so...
Yes.
So we're going to sever? So have your comments and whatever and then we'll start attacking one on one.
Okay, so the, the, I'm supportive of it, of the 30K and I'll tell you the reasons why. I would not be supportive of it if the city had the money to actually build sidewalks. If we could build sidewalks and keep the kids safe, then I'd be fine to keep it at 50. Unfortunately, we're not in a financial position to do that and I am, it's completely anecdotal, but I am shocked how much busier Machosen is since Royal Bay has opened. It is significantly busier now and it will only get busier and busier and busier. And the traffic is, there's a lot of pressure, I see a lot of people tailgating people who are legitimately trying to go slow there because people are in a hurry to get moving. And, and I really think that we need to have that 30K and it, as our deputy engineer has expressed, it's coming up the hill that's the real problem. People, people are coming up the hill and, and they're doing 60, 70 and before they know it, they're already through Sangster. So, and I don't think a lot of, and I don't think people do it on a purpose, but I don't think people realize that Dunsmere's there. I think it's kind of hidden from them and they don't realize, because, and even my own kids, my own kids, when they were going to Dunsmere, they would come out through the fields and then they would just cross anywhere to get to the corner store at Lagoon. And, and so there are kids crossing every which way, all over there. And so we have to slow those vehicles down and I'm not in favor of it personally. I mean, it gets slower to get me home, but I think from a safety standpoint, we have to do it. And I think it's also really reinforced the fact that we have to find the money to, to get sidewalks on, on busy roads like Machosen. It's the only way that we're going to keep our kids safe. And Suk, yeah, and Suk.
Anybody else? Called the, our, so are we going to drop these one-on-one then? We'll number them all off? So the first one is that it be recommended council that traffic calming measures on Machosen Road include the expansion of the 30K zone, the installation of additional school zone, playground signage, two electronic speed readers, the installation of pedestrian crossing with flashing amber lights near the bus stop. Item number one. And we know that it will have to, if it passes, it needs to go for another process, so call the question on that one?
Sorry, no, we severed it.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, are we, or I think we're even severing that paragraph.
Oh, you just that paragraph? Oh, okay. All right, so then Counselor Chung, identify where you want to stop first. That'll be number one?
Yes.
Okay. So mover and a second or on that then, please?
Um, oh, no. Yeah.
I believe the mover and second or agreed that we would vote on items separately already.
Okay, all right, so we're in there. Recorders have that? We're good?
Really?
Okay. So, on the question of expanding the 30K zone, all those in favor? Opposed? Two opposed. It carries. The next section. Is that all in one then, the next section?
No. I suggest that school zone and playground zone be one and then electronic separately.
Yeah. Why don't you, it doesn't make any difference now. Yeah, you're gonna lose anyway. Just concede that you're gonna lose.
Well, you know, the electronic speed readers are there anyway, so might as well bunch them together.
At your mercy here, folks. Which, would you like?
Sure, we'll separate them so that Lil Hawk can lose another vote.
So you want installation of the additional school zone and playground and electronic signs in one?
I'm not usually on the winning side.
You want them separately? Okay, separately they will be. Installation of the additional school zone and playground zone signage and stop? All those in favor? Opposed?
Losers.
When opposed? The installation of two electronic speed readers? All those in favor? Opposed? That one's carried as well. The installation of pedestrian crossing with flashing amber lights near the bus stop? In favor? Opposed? Everyone on that one is carried? Now, are we lumping these or we going one at a time?
Yes.
This other part? Budget priority?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, that's what I'm just saying, is that the rest of it all go together? Are we okay with that? And we have a mover and shaker still on that? You guys are still in place?
She feels good.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed?
Yeah, I know, it's, it's first time in four years I've actually won something.
Motion carried.
It's awesome. God, no wonder, it's addictive.
All right, folks, we do have one more bylaw before us to conclude the meeting. We have bylaw number 1606, first and second readings only. Callwood Land use bylaw number 151, 1989, amendment 150 for Royal Bay and Royal Bay, or Robie, Royal Bay CD 1A and Royal Bay CD 3A.
Move introduction, your worship? Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move second?
Second, second.
Discussion? Anybody? Counselor Nault?
Yeah, the only part in this whole bylaw I'm opposed to is the secondary suites in the small lot homes. I don't think that's sufficient grounds to kill the entire bylaw, but I guess this will be going to public hearing after this, so we will see what the public has to say. I'm really curious to see how they can provide adequate parking for a secondary suite in a lot that's 30 feet wide.
Counselor Day?
Yeah, the, the parking issue on the whole is problematic for me, given that there's laneways, very small lots, large lot coverage. I do under, understand, I think, but there, there are a few issues coming forward that they haven't, you know, embraced or found a way to work with us on a, some sort of higher standard for energy efficiency, that they, they really have put everything off to the next phase. I would prefer to see them working with us. I, I don't, I'm not feeling that, which is why I opposed the initial reading. And, yeah, I, I kind of agree with, with Counselor Nault. I probably, I have the luxury of being able to vote against it because I know that there is more than likely a majority of council that is going to vote in favor, but those are my reasons.
Call the question then, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Do we have to, we've already done our in-camera, we released from in-camera already our citizen appointment, so adjournment?
It's moved.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Thanks, folks. Another year under our belts and I hope you all have a wonderful holiday season.